I can hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to our June Joint School Board Assembly Meeting. We have lots of new Assembly members that we want to welcome in the room. So I'm going to call us to order. The time is 10:04.
Recording in progress.
Oh, I guess I'll do that over. Welcome to our Joint Assembly School Board Meeting. Today is Friday, June 9th. So I'm calling our meeting to order at about 10:05. And now we will have our roll call, so. Amanda, when you're ready.
Member Jacobs?
Present.
Member Donley?
Here.
Member Higgins? Member Holloman? Member Lessons is excused. Member Wilson? Looks like she is online. And President Bellamy?
Present.
For the Assembly Chair Constant?
Here.
Vice Chair Zalatell, I believe, is excused. Ms. Brawley?
Here.
Ms. Bronga?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Cross?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Martinez?
Present.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Perez Vidia? Mr. Rivera?
He's excused.
Mr. Salt, I believe, is online.
Correct, and here. Thank you.
And Mr. Walland?
Happy to be here.
Thank you.
We also have Youth Member Jesse Terrell here.
Right, also present, you just introduced our student. We also have our Superintendent Dr. Bryant, along with several other staff members in the room. So with that, please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, united all, with liberty and the
All right, thank you. And our land acknowledgement.
Thank you. We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denina people of the Upper Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Denina people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. ASD, the Anchorage Assembly, are committed to diversity and inclusion, and it is with honor and respect that we recognize all Indigenous peoples who live and learn in our communities.
And thank you very much, Chair Constant. And that brings us to item B on the agenda, minutes of our previous meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve or accept the minutes. Is there a second? Any discussion, changes, edits? Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing and hearing no opposition, the minutes are approved as presented. And that brings us to our agenda, item C. Approval of the agenda. I'll give you a minute to kind of look over it. For those of you, if this is your first meeting, this is the time that you may add an item that you would like to share, or you can hold that item and share it at the end when we do your individual comments. Yes?
I just would like to add a brief discussion under E1, which would just be a discussion of recent capital program.
Adding an item under E1, a capital, what'd you say, review?
Recent capital program, that's review on the screen.
Anything else? Seeing and hearing, we have added one item under E1. Not seeing anymore, are we ready to vote on the motion to approve the agenda? Is there any opposition to the agenda as amended? Seeing no opposition, the agenda is approved with that one addition, E1. Financial planning, this is our briefing on one-time funding and impact on our 2024 budget. Dr. Bryant?
All right, so we'll have a brief presentation from our Chief Operating Officer in a moment, but just to get to the punchline. The ASD Board passed a balanced budget back in February that went before the Assembly in March. We got to a balanced budget after quite a substantial financial deficit largely through utilizing one-time funds and a structural change by increasing our pupil-to-teacher ratio by one. Since then, the legislative session has ended, and passed through the legislature was about $50 million that would go to ASD. But the punchline is that the Governor has not signed off on the budget. There's always the possibility of vetoes. So there are a lot of question marks even as of today. So I'll let Jim take it from here.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. So House Bill 39 was passed in a one-day special session. And in the session, it included $174 million for the state in one-time funding. Depending on our actual enrollment next fall, it'll probably be somewhere in the area of $50 million. And major maintenance or capital funding, we had several projects that qualified for reimbursement grant. And if all of the projects on the state's list get funded to 100% as shown in the bill, we would get about $5.2 million toward major maintenance slash capital. Frequently, though, all of the projects don't get funded to what gets approved based off review and committee. And if some of the other school districts don't qualify, we could get a little bit more, so more to follow. But right now, we are not counting chickens. The bill has not been transmitted to the Governor. So all the eggs are sitting there. That's an overview of it, but he has 20 days from the date he receives it to sign it. I do know that his staff is working it. We've heard from our consultant or lobbyist. But we've had nothing, nothing has slipped out as to what he may or may not line item. Just to point out, last year, even though we received significant support from the legislature, he did line item capital. I've yet to see him not line item something, but it may or may not impact education, so we'll see how that plays out. And again, there was no inflation proofing for fiscal year '25, so when we start planning fiscal year '25's budget, not counting the one-time funding that we hope to receive, it would be about an $80 to $90 million deficit as a start point. So if we get the $50 million, it helps, but it certainly doesn't get us where we need to be. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Mr. Anderson, do we know, so the Governor still hasn't received the budget yet, so we're still waiting for him to get it, right?
No, ma'am, it has not left the House. The last, the last thing, when I looked this morning, was on the 1st of June, they found more errors, and they haven't fixed those errors, so they can't transmit it at this point. They're administrative, but they're still cleaning up around the edges.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you. We're moving on to item E1. Mr. Constant, Chair Constant?
Thank you very much. So recently, it was in the news that you, the school district, forwarded a capital program. And I just was hoping we could hear about the gist of it, what was covered, what remains, if there are elements that the Assembly needs to contemplate, future funding bonds, other pieces to kind of make that work. I'm hoping just to have at least a brief introduction to what happened and what the hope is.
So are you referring to memorandum 151 that we worked on? That we, the work we just had, the meeting we just had?
Yeah.
Jim Anderson will give a summary of what we discussed at the board meeting this Tuesday.
Thank you. So this Tuesday, the Board passed memo 151. It has S, substitute version. It was modified. And it basically, there was $37 million left in capital funding from one-time funds that the state gave us last legislative session. The Board had made a decision in September, October, to not obligate or commit any of those funds until after we figured out how we would build our budget. And so now we have a past budget. We have at least a legislative bill that passed the House and Senate. And so we gave a prioritized listing of potential projects. One of those was a rebuild of Ursa Major on post. For those of you who don't remember, or knew Assembly members, maybe you weren't tracking, but about three weeks before school started last fall, we finished a Tier 2, 3 seismic study on Ursa Major. And it was, it was determined by the engineer that it had significant seismic issues. And so throughout the winter and spring, me and my team have been working with Jay Bear, and we went in May to a DOD conference, and we received an 80/20 matching grant to rebuild Ursa Major. So we'll get $80 million or $40 million roughly from the federal government. And on this list, the Board committed $11 million-ish and change towards the 20% for our match. Part of that money was FEMA reimbursement money from projects we had completed. That was the bulk of it. And then some of it was from the $37 million. There was a number of other projects from roofs to secure vestibules and other things. And then the Board also added $26 million to ward Inlet View. Now, the total cost to rebuild Inlet View is certainly much higher. There's still an outstanding approximately $14 million that hypothetically could be bonded. Or some other funding could come if there was another special session this fall from the legislature, although I haven't seen a lot of movement on that. But it would, in effect, have a smaller bonded amount if this occurs this spring, or next spring when the voters see our next bond.
Questions? Yeah.
Yes, on the Inlet View funding, since you, so you said that there's $26 million that's been allocated. It's not the full amount. I guess I'm wondering, is it related to phasing, or how much basically can get done with that money, knowing that it would take, you know, it'd take a while for the bond to come into play?
I can answer that. We can't do a construction contract with a guaranteed max without having the full funding available. But what it would do is reduce the burden on taxpayers in the next bond because it would be a much smaller amount.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd had some conversations last night with members of the community down there in South Edition and advocates for the project, and there was some conversation about, really, let's work aggressively to find an alternative to bonding for that $10 million, only because of the the opposition engendered. I don't want to put the rest of the projects for the school district at risk if we can find another way. I'm not opposed to going that way, and I would advocate for it, and I know some people are laughing in the room right now about a matter of taking care of the kids of Inlet View. But practically speaking, I would like us to work together to find a way, maybe an additional grants of federal funding, some support that we can work towards to take that out so that the rest of the needs of the school district can also be met without a necessary political fight.
I could add one comment to that. The city of Anchorage does provide 100% of the operational funding that is allowed and also close to the tax cap as well. But things like student nutrition, transportation, capital funds, those are counted outside the operational fund if that's what the city were to choose.
Thank you. Ms. Bronga?
I was just going to echo that it's odd to be a retired teacher and kind of not in support of that project, but I think the voters pretty loudly said that they didn't want it rebuilt. And if it was to go forward, I agree with Mr. Constant that putting it on a bond would be disastrous optically, and that teachers often get the backlash from spending on something that the community didn't want, so.
Thank you. Member Donley?
I think the proper way to do it would be, for the very first time, give the voters an honest choice. They've never had an honest choice with Inlet View where they stood alone on its own merits. It's always been mixed in with other things. The first time, the only reason that I feel that the design money was ever approved is because it was lumped in with the earthquake bonds that absolutely needed those earthquake repairs. At the time, I tried to divide out the earthquake dollars from the rest of that bond, and the Board chose not to do it at that time. That would have been an honest decision presented to the voters about whether to move forward with a total tear-down rebuild of this elementary school. It's such a significant step, and it leads to bigs the question, what about the next two schools? Because on the six-year plan, Inlet View is just the first of three schools that currently is proposed to be torn down and completely replaced. So I think the way to do it, rather than try to find a backdoor way to fund it and avoid voter, what the voter said, is to put it on the bond separately from any other of the school bond expenses. So have it stand alone, so the voters will, for the very first time in this community, get to take an honest up or down vote on whether to move forward with this project.
Thank you, Member Donley. Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the question, the opportunity to talk about the memo. I found solace in looking back at where the Board was last fall, the last time, I think, the topic of capital investment came up at one of these joint meetings with the prior configuration of the Assembly. We nearly spent all remaining school bond debt reimbursement, roughly $37 million on one particular project, which I think would have been problematic for a number of different reasons. Instead, member 151-S allocated the remaining school bond debt funds, leveraged FEMA reimbursement as well as federal matching funds to aggressively attack capital investment projects in 20 of the 24 Anchorage legislative districts from South Anchorage to South Edition, East Anchorage, Eagle River. These, each of these projects bring value to Anchorage taxpayers and reduce future bond debt obligation. And so I think I'm proud of this memorandum compared to where we were last October. I will echo the comments of Mr. Anderson referenced earlier that there are certainly other opportunities and ways we can examine completing the funding stack. We have a funding stack for a new building at Ursa Major on base for military families. We're utilizing federal funds to complete that. The current proposal, according to our CIP that was approved last fall, is to start the funding stack with the money that was allocated in 151-S and complete that with the 2024 school bond. Obviously, there's room for additional configuration. But absent some sort of situation where the Board were to look at just closing schools and falling to disrepair, you know, we have to continue being visionary in what we want to support for schools in Anchorage, and I think this memorandum did that, so we're certainly happy, wanted to share that sentiment too. I appreciate the question, opportunity to discuss.
Thank you. Member Holloman?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, there were a number of things that happened around that bond. It wasn't a straight-up vote, as Member Donley pointed out. And of course, the problem with a straight-up vote on individual things is, one, obviously, nothing would ever get built in Gerwood again. It really does sort of ask the whole city, it asks the whole city, do you want to spend money to build this project in South Anchorage or in Eagle River? So I can't remember if we used to separate out the Clark bond, but it never passed until it was mixed in with a lot of other projects. And we, the Board, has, and I say this from observing before I was on the Board, always tried to put a mix geographically across the whole municipality. I kind of shudder to think about what would happen if we went to that approach, to where we broke them out individually. But I, it's a complex thing, but certainly Inlet View was not all the angst that people were feeling on that bond.
Okay. Member, Mr. Walland?
Thank you. You know, I was going to ask, you know, is there a precedent for that, where you would bond for just one school at a time? I think you're going to have the opposite of the NIMBY program. It's going to be not in your backyard. You know, I want all the school funding in my backyard. I also, you know, I think one of the reasons that bond did not pass was because it was $111 million, and Anchorage voters had sticker shock. And so I think when we consider funding opportunities in the future, maybe having it be more constrained to a manageable amount, I think it's kind of wrong to blame the failure of that bond solely on Inlet View's inclusion. So for what it's worth, I think there were more factors at play for why that bond did not pass, other than Inlet View.
Thank you. Member Donley?
Member Holloman, didn't we, my memory is, and I'm reaching back in my memory here, is we did high schools with separate bonds. And I think it might have taken one or two, even three tries, you know, to get them through. But I think we do have the precedent of breaking out some really major projects like that. At those times, I think the high schools were about the same as what we're paying now for Inlet View.
Hey, let's see, we have, Mr. Cross?
Yeah, I see the direction you're going with that, Mr. Donley. But the only way I think you could keep it really pure is that if you separated them out. But unfortunately, I think that would also require that only the individuals who live in the district that services that school, because then those property owners, but I don't see how you, otherwise, I just see a vast failure of bond projects because there is a lot of, I'm not going to pay for that school in that district. That's not my responsibility. That's a frustrating algorithm. And yet, really, if it were to be a pure formula, it would be just the residents who live in and who service that school, and those local individuals would choose on whether or not they want to invest in that school based on their aggregate of taxes. But I don't think we can afford to get that incremental.
Thank you, sir. Let the record show that Member Higgins has joined us. Just one minute. Mr. Higgins? Oh, did you want to speak? I thought you were just telling me you were here. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Member Higgins?
Is it on? Yeah. The history of this, my wife was on the school board back in the 90s, and I was on it, you know, 15 years ago. And the history has been that if a bond came up and it had Eagle River, it got passed. If it didn't have Eagle River, it failed, and you had a lot of support throughout the other. And so combining these was a big issue. If you're going to balance things out, you need to put it on there. I agree that the size of this bond was an issue too. This was a very close vote. I mean, this isn't an overwhelming rejected type of issue. We're talking four points difference, I believe, is what the difference was, 52-48 or something like that. You had the issue of the size of the bond. You had all kinds of, the timing, the fact that the state hasn't been supporting the bonds, a lot of questions and issues out there. But the history of separating it out very carefully resulted in some bonds getting approved and some bonds not, the same thing. And you had different areas of the city not supporting, municipalities not supporting it. So I agree that putting things in in separation some without $117 million doing that was a mistake. I think that was an error, and we did a poor job of educating the public on that bond. I don't think we did a good job there at all. But I also think the size of it was a problem, and I think it isn't overwhelming. It's very close, and it was within that category. So the amount of money we funded or already provided is going to be enough to, mine is to deal with the major renovation, but it's not enough to replace it. And we've seen the stuff with the, on phase where they do the review and say, you know, you reach a point where you got enough damage, it doesn't make sense to simply replace, simply repair it. They've decided they need to replace it. Could do it cheaper, yes, but are you going to have the same life expectancy? You're going to have other issues come up. So there are some advantages to simply replacing it at this point. When you got $15,000 worth of damage to a $20,000 car, they don't generally fix it. And that's kind of what I think we're dealing with this issue. We need to educate the public on it and keep the bonds. If we're going to do $100 million, it should not be one bond.
Thank you very much. Okay, yes. Mr. Constant, and then Member Jacob?
So I'm just going to speak to the tone of this conversation briefly. I was mocked by Member Donley when I suggested coming up with alternative means. He laughed mockingly. And then when I suggested using alternative means, it was already discussed that we found 80% from the federal government for one of the schools, that I was only suggesting that we do that. But then it was suggested that we need an honest discussion and that I was attempting a backdoor effort, all of which is, I believe, an attack on my character. Instead, I think it would be wise to focus on the issues and the processes as opposed to making suggestions of such nature. Separate from that, it was suggested by a member of the Assembly that they agree with my point, but then they said it would be disastrous. I don't believe it would be disastrous to go forward, and I support the project. And so I come from it differently. I just want to protect and ensure as best as possible what we sent to the voters is affirmatively voted on, and by taking contention off the table, things that are just going to generate conflict, I find it better. And so I believe that we can do better in this discussion.
Thank you very much. Member Jacobs?
Yeah, maybe just potentially in wrap-up, unless there's more folks who want to comment. But to Member Walland's comments earlier, not only, I think your suspicions are right that attributing the bond failure to any particular project is misguided and isn't borne out by the data. But we know that, in fact, because we received data. 20% of respondents in a poll that we conducted, which is 220% of any individuals who weighed in on a specific project on the bond, indicated that both the size and a two-year bond were the problematic elements. And so this Board, to be responsive, moved back to smaller annual bonds, which I think is important for, one, just the sheer size and the shock value when you're voting on a proposition. But two, and something else to keep in mind, we still have the school mod debt moratorium, which goes through 2025 in Juneau. Those funds hopefully will be returning to us, and the state will be picking up their fair share of maintaining capital investment in education. And so there is hope on the way until that time occurs. I think smaller annual bonds are the way to receive positive regard from the community and ways to inject capital investments into our portfolio schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So it looks like everyone who wished to speak on this had spoken. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We're now moving on to item F. There are no items under F. And now we're at G, G1, our CCL update.
All right, so we're going to go into a brief presentation, but the summary is that ASD is in the midst of a multi-year college career and life readiness transformation. It's one of our three board goals. But the big picture is that we want the workforce to begin in ASD schools. So we'll be engaging in a multi-year transformation that really turns our high schools into academies that expose students to more college credit, more internships, hands-on learning, and hopefully, high-wage, high-demand jobs right here in Anchorage to build our workforce and address our talent shortages. It's exciting stuff. It'll require an investment of dollars and time and resources, but we really think it's worth it for the future of our city. So I'll pass it to my teammate.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our new Assembly members. Just for the record and to introduce myself, my name's Kirsten Johnson. I'm the Senior Director of Secondary Education for the school district. So thank you, Member Higgins, for passing those out for me. I appreciate it. So I wanted to just share a brief update on our college career life readiness update, as the Superintendent introduced. Essentially, and I refer to it as CCL as we go along, just for short, because it is a long title. Essentially, what we're looking to do in our high schools is design a career academy model. And we're going to undergo a fairly rigorous transformation process that's very community-based in nature. And our ideal is that we have a lot more interaction with our business community, our industries that are in town and in the state, so that we can build that pathway to workforce so that we can build that pathway to workforce straight from high school. And it, it's not necessarily gonna be just a job training program. We will still have college options and rigorous coursework and all of those great things that exist. But it will give kids more of a direction. So I like to design, I like to explain it as like a launchpad for life. So many of our kids graduate from high school without a roadmap ahead of them. And I think that that's a disservice to our young people, and I think that's why a lot of our young people are leaving us in their, in the state. Because they don't see the connection for them. And when you look at the data, the biggest out migration of Alaska residents is that 16 to 24-year-old age bracket. And so our goal is to be a workforce development entity in the state and in the, in the city. And to really give our kids a leg up. What we would really like to see our kids graduate are, and you'll see on this flyer, I'm just gonna kind of speak to it. And you could, I'm not gonna necessarily follow it word for word, but what we really want to get to is increase college credits while students are in high school. We want to graduate students that have already earned industry credentials. And as we design our career academy model, have just better engagement and investment in the high school education that they're, they're experiencing. And like I said, many of our kids leave us not knowing what their plan is, and that's a disservice to our community. And so we really want this to be a community transformation, not just a district transformation. And in an effort to do that, we're going to be engaging in a lot of community engagement strategies moving forward. Probably the most prominent one in the near future is October 12th, which we're calling a community convening. And that's where we will gather not only district folks, but people from around our city who are major stakeholders in that workforce development. I would love to see the assembly be a part of that. And essentially what we will do on that day is really review what we want for students to have in body when they graduate from high school. Not just the academic skills, but the dispositions and what we, we have a vision for, for our young people when they leave us. The other part of that day will really be getting to a kind of a research kind of element where we look at what is the, what are the high need industries and careers that are needed in our state so that we can start to develop our career academies around those needed industries and jobs. And so in order to, to, that'll be a real big event for us. And then prior to, as we go through the whole school year and prior to that, there's going to be a lot of outreach to individual organizations and businesses so that we can bring the community together for this event. So if you turn it over, I just wanted to kind of give you the, on the backside of the flyer. This is the timeline that we've, we've put together. And we're really gonna be looking, at the bottom there, you'll see, we'll be looking at transforming our teaching and learning. So the high school experience will be very different. There will still be lots of opportunities for kids. But what we would, as we design it, what we would want students to do is their, their 10th grade year, select a career academy in their high school. So we will design those academies based on the workforce data. We will engage the industry and businesses around that academy. And, and students will take their English, math, social studies, all of the regular subjects, but they'll also be engaged in a career academy course from 10th grade to 12th grade, where they will learn applicable job skills. They will eventually hit a capstone of an industry credential and, and all along the way, they'll, they'll be earning dual credit if it's applicable as well. Their freshman year, we would ask them to participate in a freshman academy, and that's where we would prep students for understanding who they are, what their strengths are, and how those play into a career academy decision. And so our high schools will look vastly different. We're hoping to launch our freshman academies in the fall of '24. And then that, that class, as they move to 10th grade in the fall of '25, would participate in our first career academy year. And so you'll see in that timeline, there's lots of things that are kind of leading up to that. And as we move forward, we'll build those academies up as over time. But there's three categories at the bottom of the second page there that we're really gonna be focusing on. The teaching and learning transformation, I've talked about quite a bit. System structures and culture of schools, that's going to change as well. You're gonna see, as opposed to education operating in somewhat of a silo independently, you'll see lots of folks integrated from the community into these career pathways and academies. They'll be guest speakers. They'll be helping us develop the curriculum. And, and businesses that we've talked to so far are super excited about it. They're ready and hungry for that, that opportunity. We also will be transforming the partnerships. And we've started some of that work through our career and technical education courses this year to get us ready so that we have the number of partnerships ready that we need. But I wanted to just give an update to the assembly because we are starting to engage our business and industry community, our community partners in a real way. We've been working with the Chamber. We've been working with AEDC. We've been working with United Way and UAA. All so that we can be a real strong community partnership around this work. And I would just really hope the assembly is excited about it. I'm happy to talk more about it as well if the assembly would like to spend some time diving into it. But I just wanted to be here with the superintendent today to provide an update.
Yeah, thank you. This is a really exciting program, and I understand it's still early in this timeline, right? But it seems like there's a lot of great possibilities. Two questions I have. First is, are you guys looking at, or obviously on the business side, would be looking at paid internships perhaps during the summer?
That would, we would hopefully get there for sure. We'd love that. We're, we're looking at all sorts of different experiences. Paid internships would be great. Non-paid internships would be great. We would also like, love to see like job shadows. We would love to see experiential field trips in, in the field of whatever the industry is. We also would like to see our teachers spend some time with professionals around their profession so that when they're teaching students, they really understand it. So those are just a variety of the things we're thinking about.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I would encourage really nudging the business community to look at paid internships, especially during the summer. Because I know there's, there's been research over the years about, you know, just making sure we're, we're paying people for their time. And I think that's a good precedent to set for our students as well.
Yeah. And what we're also hoping to do through those experiences is build that network for students so they have those connections. So when they're ready to apply for jobs, they have those networking connections too.
For sure. And then my other question is, just briefly, have you, so you mentioned business, and I completely agree that we should be working with the private sector. I'm also interested in what conversations you guys have had with the municipality itself and basically local government. Because I think it's, you know, certainly we have a workforce shortage and, you know, I, I feel very passionately that, that we should expose kids more to local government first. I reflect on my own experience. I learned about how a bill becomes a law. I learned about Congress. And then I didn't even learn, for example, what planning was until I was in my late twenties. And then that's the career I ended up in. And so that's where folks interact most with government is local government. So I think it's really important to encourage folks to, to look at service.
Yeah, no, I think that's a very valid point. This will touch business and industry. We're also looking at local and state government opportunities. We've already connected with the Department of Education with the state. We've also been connecting with the mayor's office as well, so how we can create some municipal partnerships in that vein. We also are looking at the nonprofit community as well because we have a high number of nonprofits in our community. So we're also going to reach out to J-Bear and our military leadership. So we're trying to cover all of the gamut, not just a specific entity.
Thank you.
And someone from the mayor's office was on the task force.
Yes, Junior Amagavi is on our, our kind of leadership think tank group that we have going on right now. We're still building that group. It's not a static group, and we're adding people as we go along and the work grows.
All right. Thank you. Member Holloman, you're next in the queue.
Thank you. And I may say something that's incorrect because I'm not fully up to speed on this. But this will put different academies at different high schools, which I think creates the probability that we'll have students that want to move across town during the school day or zone exempt, which creates a transportation issue. And it's, it's sad, I think, but there's a lot of policy and opportunity in ASD that's driven by how many buses we have and how many drivers we have. But that's, that's something I hope the city would sort of keep in mind just in looking at PeopleMover. That our, our high schools, to some degree, may be a center of gravity for ridership. And that may play into the kind of opportunity they have if they want to be an EMT. That's gonna be a pathway that's at a particular school. And students from around the community may want to go there for that opportunity or one of the other ones at one of the other high schools. So it's, it's gonna create some really neat opportunities. And I think one of the really good things is it will put a lot more CTE back in our neighborhood schools rather than having it focused in one area. But it creates a need for transportation.
Thank you very much. We have a number of speakers in the queue. Mr. Martinez, you next.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, yes. And, and I say that with the, with the, with, with an intentionality of also just recognizing that advocacy work that I was able to do from my time during the administration is seated here, and I can see it clearly. I can see it in the branding of different things as well. So let me just put it out there and articulate it again for folks who don't remember. The work that we did was convene what was called the Path to Purpose, Cradle to Career and Beyond. And United Way picked up the Cradle to Career piece after 20, 20 by 20, 90 by 20, 20 didn't, we got to 2020. And, and then to see pathways to prosperity, all this work comes from advocacy around wall-to-wall CTE. And, but really thinking of that Cradle to Career. So let me put it in a context that I'd like to understand as well. First, we have investments now with marijuana sales tax and early childhood education. That was part of the advocacy work of Cradle to Career. So that's coming online. I think that's really exciting. And we talked about relationships to the university and upward steps credentialing and credits, and I love hearing how that's continuing to grow. The question has always been workforce development and really connecting the dots. And we started doing municipal work through the different departments with HR at the time where we expanded workforce opportunities through different departments. So there's some real opportunities there to continue deepening. I recently met with Junior to talk a little bit more about that as well, share some past experiences and some other ideas that maybe he wasn't thinking about. And then there was a concept around how to get small businesses involved in it as well. The laboratory is the city, essentially, right? So a local apprenticeship business, right? So they're not necessarily big institutions, trades as well, but thinking of how the small businesses could come online. And I remember one person, John Schwartz, who owns a pretty reputable audio and alarm installation company here, talked about how he would love to have his business sign up. And right, so go through the small business, school business partnerships and whatnot, but really thinking of very strategically explaining that. And then graphically mapping it out so that young people have the graphic representation in their hands to see where these things go. And in that work, we, we worked for, with the, with UAA to, to bring on the e-portfolios. So that they could start to capture more learning outcomes different earlier on in their educational journey. So that by the time they got to university questions, they had an e-portfolio process. So I just wanted to throw those couple of things out there. And if they weren't thought about, if they had been, great. I'm interested in being a part of this conversation. And then I'll just close a kind of thought here with saying, at the opening meeting of the, of our first assembly meeting, the mayor mentioned he had a meeting with me. And he said, and he looked at work with me on getting young people on the PeopleMover. And the reason for that was because my son asked me the question as he's starting to go to college, high school now, which was, which is, why don't more young people use PeopleMover for, for the buses to get to school? So I'm interested in that area as well, just to hearing from our other school board member. And I just think this is great work. It will really inspire a cultural shift in our city. And, and I describe a city that says it's investing in its young people and in their pathways to success, purpose, and prosperity. It's a city that's looking ahead for the future and a city on the right direction. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
And thank you very much. Mr. Terrell, you're next.
Yeah, so I think this is an awesome program. I'm, I just graduated from sophomore year, so I might barely touch the program. But I think we should, I think vocational learning is incredibly important, like specific vocational jobs. But I think contact with university or there's a program, middle college, that's currently going that I've heard is incredibly successful. Builds credits during high school so you can go straight into workforce out of high school. And I think not only vocational learning like carpentry and electrician, but also other professional fields that would involve a degree as well.
Okay, member Jacob.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So really quick to circle back on member Martinez's comments on PeopleMover. I, I second any conversation about how we better utilize that resource to support students, which has tangential ties to a number of different areas of improvement. So I'm, I'm on board there. To circle back to member Brawley's comments about internships, I know we have this new exciting initiative, and I'm equally excited about it. It is one of the board's top priorities to address, and it's something the community feels very strongly about, something frankly our state needs. With that said, I did want to highlight that there are currently internship opportunities that happen every year through our CTE program as well as our gifted program. The last time I checked, I wanted to say there was dozens, if not close to 100, local business partners that have either hosted or have signed up to host an intern. And I don't know if administration wanted to touch on that briefly for maybe some of our new assembly members who aren't quite as familiar with the program.
And I don't think all of those are paid, but they do exist. I'll add you to the queue. All right, Mr. Volin.
No, I'm thinking of maybe some optical internships. On member Holloman's point on transportation, you know, I will say that there's a Ford logo on here, so maybe that's. A question that I have is sort of along the same lines. So if there's different programs at different locations, as young people are sort of forming and developing their interests and thinking about what they want to do in the future, you know, I feel like I'm sort of lucky in a way that I kind of glommed on to optometry pretty early. And I, I had the opportunity to work in the optical industry, and that's really solidified it for me. So I knew what I wanted to do when I got to college, worked very hard. But I think for, for a lot of my peers, they were still figuring out what they wanted to do. So this type of program, I guess my questions are, how can students get exposure to maybe different things? And what choice do they have? Or what kind of guidance would be provided by counselors to maybe align them with a certain program? But then also, if they decide, you know, I'm not really interested in carpentry. I want to go do auto mechanic or, or cosmetology or something else. What sort of latitude do they have to pursue those different interests?
Sure. Madam President, I can address that if you don't mind. So what, there's, there's a number of things that, that are kind of going to be built into the system to address that. Because I mean, when you're 14 or 15, you don't necessarily always stick with your idea of, of employment, right? That's part of growing up and having experiences. So, so there's going to be some middle school programming we will put into place to get students ready to really understand what those pathways are and what jobs are associated with pathways. I like to use the health, like the health arena as a, a good example. Like when, when you look at healthcare, you can have a straight out of high school job if you have the right industry credential. But you could also go all the way through medical school to be a doctor, and there's a whole range of professions in between. So when we design academies, we're going to address all of those pathways within healthcare, not just being a doctor, if that makes sense, or straight to work. So students will be able to understand what all of those different types of opportunities are and how to get there, not just one particular path in the healthcare industry. And we would do that for other industries as well as we build the academies. So that way students can say, you know, this is, this is what, like the amount of school I'm willing to commit to, or I need a job right after high school, so I need to go here first. And they can make those choices and have advisement along the way. But even prior to that, in middle school, we are gonna put a lot of career exploration into the middle school curriculum as well and into their day. As sixth grade moves to middle school in the fall of 2024, holistically across the city, that's going to be a part of the plan that we build is integrating that career explore. Um, holistically across the city, um, that's going to be a part of the plan that we build is integrating that career exploration in a real intentional way in middle school. But then the freshman academy that I mentioned, um, that all freshmen would go through is really about just kind of what you talked about. Um, like understanding what it means to be in that particular career field. Um, and they would do a number of things throughout the, the freshman year to understand it better. So that in the spring, when they're making their choices about classes the next year, they have a good background, um, about how to make that choice. The other thing that we're going to build in is that, um, while you select a career academy, tenth grade year, as you move through this process. Um, you would still be able to change academies after your tenth grade year. So if you selected hea- healthcare as the example, but you really wanted to do construction, you would be able to make that choice once and leap to a different academy your junior year. But after that, we would ask students to stay, um, where they're at. Um, so we don't want to track kids. We don't want to lock them in where they don't feel like they have choices. But the other thing I will say, um, there's incredible data out of communities, um, that have done this. They've seen a reduction in crime in their communities. They've seen increased workforce development. They've seen better achievement and graduation rates and attendance at the, at the high school level. Um, they've even seen a decrease in gang involvement in high crime, um, communities. So there's a lot of great, um, kind of linked data that you'll see out of this that I think would be really beneficial for us here in Anchorage too. Um, and what those communities that have been through that process have said is even if students don't go into the career field that they were in an academy for. They, they have found that students have learned enough, what would they call transferable skills to other job markets that they're able to carry those things with them. And, um, I've, I've been on site to a number of, um, districts that have, have implemented this already. And, and I've pulled students aside. And I, I know, um, a, a couple of board members have gone with us as well and probably had this experience. And when you ask them, are you going to do this, um, for your job after high school? Are you going to go to school for this or, or whatever the question is? And some students will say no. And then you'll say, well, are you still glad you did this? And resoundingly, the response was yes. Like this has given me a really good opportunity to figure this out and know that it's not for me. So that way they're not spending a lot of technical school or college, um, tuition to make a really big mistake, if that makes sense. So, so that was a long response, but.
Thank you very much. Uh, Member Constance.
Once again, North Anchorage, uh, demonstrates that it shares some thinking, maybe not agreement, but thinking on what's important. Cause my question, my first question was about the data on career readiness at, for fifteen year olds and what the strategies are to ensure that we don't just create a track that pushes someone through instead, how is it going to be flexible? So that was, I think, answered quite fine. But I had, uh, kind of two other sub points that are related to this idea that Mr. Member Holloman brought up about transportation issues related to zone exemptions, related to kids wanting to go where the opportunity meets their interests. And, um, that raises, of course, the inevitable question of equity issues that are inevitable around when there are certain schools that have opportunities that other schools don't, and then other neighborhoods don't have a real means to access those schools, then it isn't really fair for those kids. And so having some focus on that, it'd probably be a real valuable piece to the conversation. And finally, um, the idea of using muni transit is an excellent idea. And the only thing that I would add to that is they need a lot of lead time for any implementation of change relating to how they serve the community. And so I see you have a twenty twenty three date for reviewing master planning, tactical implementation plans, et cetera. And I think that if the munis transit department is part of this conversation, you need to reach them like six months ago. And so dive in if you can. I'll, I'll be happy to, um, connect Jamie Acton, who's the director. I'm sure they'll be interested in trying to figure out how this could work.
Sure.
It's a great idea.
Thank you. Now we already have a lot of our students riding the bus already.
We do.
We give them passes to do that.
Yeah, we have an agreement where, uh, high school and middle school students can show their I D and ride for, for free. Essentially, um, we have that, um, arrangement. Um, I think we could expand that program in this work. Um, and, and I think a lot of it has to come down to routes and rerouting. Um, because some of our high schools don't have bus stops at their school site. Um, but I think that would be a better use of our collective resources, um, than, you know, buying more school buses and find, trying to find drivers that don't, um, exist right now.
Follow up?
Yeah, I just, I think what Member Holloman was really getting to, and you can correct me if I misapprehended what you were suggesting, is that if this works, it could actually reconfigure how we look at transit in our community because the schools could become hubs from school to work, from home to school, and they're located across the city. We have a system that's designed around town centers. But it could be a, a very interesting approach to looking at that again and thinking what are our actual town centers versus our aspirational town centers? And then building a system that meets the needs there. And so what I heard you suggest was let's look at the transit system in relationship to this program. And see about, is there a way to reconfigure it to better meet the needs of the whole community? And it's a good idea.
Sure.
We have three more speakers before we move on. Mr. Cross.
Thank you. Regarding industry recognized, uh, credentials, um, has there been any emphasis or any, uh, consideration in public safety, police and fire? You know, we're, our recruiting levels are, are historically low. Out of three hundred and thirty applicants, only fourteen made it.
Right.
Academy stage. And so planting those seeds as well as that bridge between law enforcement and youth, which I think there's kind of this, uh, misconception, um, uh, you know, cause basically the, you know, our best police officers and our best firefighters, our individuals who grew up in our community, they know it. They have a relationship. They understand. And right now we're really having to recruit, I forget the term that they use, but it was, uh, you know, it infused from other places. And it's, it's very expensive to do so because you're paying relocation costs and you're reallocating from others. So.
Right.
Can we speak a little bit about partnering with some of our public safety entities?
Sure, I certainly can. Um, they would certainly be at the table. Um, and, and I would imagine that that's one of the categories of career academies that would rise to the surface when we start looking at the data. Um, cause our, our goal is to create academies that lead to a, a real robust labor market for our students to enter into. And so, um, what we would do with that community convening on October twelfth that I mentioned is do a real look at what does our community need? Um, and I believe I, I use healthcare because I know that that's probably going to be one that rises to the top. Um, I think public safety will, I think there's, there's some that we know will automatically rise to the top. Um, there's also going to be things that are just important to us in the Anchorage community that come into play as well. Um, like I think about the International Baccalaureate Program at West High School. That is really an, an institution and, and important in our community. So there's going to be a huge community conversation. Part of the work we will do to make this a community trans, um, transformation is have folks from all of the different entities be a part of the conversation with us alongside the district. So that, um, we're meeting the needs of, of the community while orchestrating it within the district. And so, um, everybody's going to be at the table, hopefully, um, if they're willing to participate. And, and we'll be able to have those conversations of what the needs are and, and what do kids actually really need to know? Um, because we may not be teaching the right things and need to adjust that internally within the education system.
Thank you. All right. Member Wilson.
So I actually appreciate all of your energy, Member Martinez. Um, and I echo that because I had the privilege of, uh, uh, going to Nashville and seeing one of the programs that has been, uh, I think, what's it, whether it's like twelve years and.
Seventeen.
Seventeen years into this work. Um, so I got to see it firsthand, talk to students, talk to the staff. It was, it was amazing. There, we have many of those pieces in place in Anchorage and the, and the, and the Anchorage School District, like our school business partnership program, our career technology education program. Our, you know, A E D C has been, has been wonderful, U A A. We have all these pieces in place so that I'm super excited about working more collaboratively. And to benefit our students and working together rather than working, um, each on our, on our own mission. So that, that has been really actually a lot of fun for me. Um, our work with U A A, I'm, I'm super excited to see the deeper connections that are being made uh, to benefit our students and benefit our community. Um, I, obviously apprenticeship is, is really important to me. So the, the pathways, the different opportunities for our students, um, to educate them earlier. So they can select or deselect what they want to, to study and learn, um, the certification opportunities that that our students, um, are, are really having the opportunity to, to take advantage of and, and, and and really trying to educate our community as to what the district is already doing. And, uh, you know, the, the work, um, understanding that some of our students are, are receiving their pilot's license in high school, the, uh, personal care assistant certification. It's C N A, correct?
Correct.
The, the C N A stu- students receiving their C N A certification. I mean, these are job ready opportunities for students who choose to either go to college and build their resume or go to work. He- here in Anchorage, ideally is what we're trying to build towards. We have students this year that received their C D L license before they graduated, um, and are already at work, which is very cool. Their, their direct entry into apprenticeship programs. I mean, these are fantastic things that our schools have been doing and will continue to build to improve on. So this work is to improve that, to work more collaboratively. And I really appreciate the conversation about the de-selection because de-selecting a career early on when you're still in high school and it's not going to cost you time and money and cost your parents like myself, time and money. It is huge. So these kids have the opportunity. I get just as excited to hear about them de-selecting a career as they do selecting a career because they're like, my, my daughter took a culinary program and said, this is amazing. I love to cook. I would never do this for a living. So I mean, these are the great opportunities that they have and the deeper connections that we're building within the community. So, so thank you for that energy. I echo it. I, I really hope that, um, we continue the, the work with our community members and our community partners. Um, but I, I appreciate all this work. I love it.
All right. Thank you. And our last speak, not last, but for this round, Mr. Martinez.
Yes, uh, thank you again, Chair. Um, so the, the, the earlier we start exposing young people, the better, and from my perspective. And some of that early work we did, uh, that, um, when we were exploring this during my time administration was, was coming out of Oakland. And, um, and they had a complimentary early childhood investment, uh, component where they were providing, especially with the equity question that, that Mr. Constant raises later on. Uh, it was really about making sure their financial literacy and they even had a program. It was the, 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 the Healthy Starts Program. Whatever, I forgot exactly the term, but it was where families who are coming out of our, our pre K, expanded pre K or whatever it was. They, they got a child savings account of a hundred dollar investment. The school, the, the city put a bond together. They put funding together and then leveraged it with the Fortune five hundred companies around and said, we're going to build a trust to invest in early childhood education. We're in a different trajectory because now we have, uh, a, a voter approved, uh, potential of how we invest in early childhood education. But I would just recommend that the financial literacy and the exposure to these conversations begin with families early. Uh, early on in the process. So by the time they get to middle school, they're, they're already thinking of not necessarily the career, but the experiential opportunities that they may be exposed to, right? So that by the time they get into high school, maybe there's a career shift in thinking how they apply it to the world. But having the pipeline begin real early and, and then supporting the family engagement early on, I think is just a real critical element. I just wanted to articulate that because that's the planting the seeds in the marketplace that I think are really important. To Mr. Cross's part, I, I, when I talked to Deputy Chief Sean Case recently, I said, I would love to see in five to seven years and a, an academy of high school students we have today, right? So starting with the, with advantage point. I love the, the way we're going to utilize data to identify the starting points, recognizing that that also implies flexibility of the shifts in the marketplace. And I think that alignment is really substantially important. Um, and it also speaks to, uh, just the, the public transportation conversation. I think it's really important. Uh, I've had a couple of conversations already. You also a- allow students to ride free all summer. So that's another opportunity that we are, we have now. And when we think about summer internships and summer opportunities, I, I want to, uh, just make sure we, we really clearly see those things as available.
Sure. All right. And, and that is a perfect segue into our next topic. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thank you. Really appreciate it. Um, our next topic is our pre K expansion. Can I see Chelsea's here?
Yes, so we will pass it on to Chelsea to give an overview of where we're at in terms of pre K.
Hello, I'm Chelsea Sohm. Uh, I'm still getting used to my new last name. Um, so I didn't fumble. Um, but I'm the current preschool director. Um, and I'm going to give you guys an overview from two thousand seventeen, when this position started to where we are now, um, and some of the uniqueness that we've experienced through our growth over the last six years. So this chart shows our special education classrooms and our general education classrooms. And you can see each year the numbers have only gone up. Um, and what you're seeing is we started with only thirteen general education classrooms across the district. Um, and where we had classrooms, they were mostly funded by Title One at that point. So it was eleven Title One classrooms and then two funded by migrant education. Um, since then, we have worked diligently to expand our programming by utilizing multiple funding sources. And I'll show those funding sources later. Um, but we also experienced quite an increase in special education. The first couple of years that I was in this position. Um, and that's not necessarily a bad thing. Early intervention for kids, the sooner we catch them, um, the better. So we, we saw an increase as Anchorage's population was slightly decreasing. Um, and then the last really three years in special education, we've been pretty consistent. We have seen higher needs of kids coming in, especially after the pandemic. Um, but we were able to really expand our general education classrooms. So our program structure, um, we have special education that starts for children who are eligible at age three. They transition from infant learning. So if they're identified before age three, they're working with a program called Pick or Focus in the community. For services, they come to us. And then also at age three, for any parents that have a concern about their child's development, they can come get a screening. Um, and if eligible, they'll enter into our special education programs. That way, three-year-old children attend two and a half hours a day, four days per week. Um, we have a communication special education program as well, which is a lower need. So they have, uh, speech and language needs, not necessarily cognitive needs. And they attend for a shorter period of time, two and a half hours, just two days per week. Um, our four-year-old children, the year before kindergarten, both special education and general education, attend four hours per day, five days a week, for a total of twenty hours, with the exception of our early childhood program at King Tech. Um, which I'll plug in here. We did have three students get their C D As, their child development associates this year with paid internship in A S D preschool. Um, that was pretty huge for us. Um, so that program aligns more to the high school schedule because we have to have the high schoolers and the preschoolers there at the same time in order to do the work. Um, and then we also have what we call buddy bears, which are typical peers in both our three and four-year-old special education classrooms. Um, and they serve as peer models for social emotional behavior, language for our children with disabilities. So funding sources, this list is not short. Um, and I will tell you, it has changed every single year that I've been here. Um, so our special education children, when eligible, are funded through the state funding formula. Um, we have expanded the use of Title One funds for general education preschool migrants. We were up to three classrooms last year and we're slowly kind of phasing that funding source out. Um, because as we expand into more A S D schools, migrants can't fund a program where there's already an existing program. So in a sense, we will hopefully eventually push migrants funding out where we would be funding, um, the programs generally at some point. So we're still using migrant funds for two classrooms this upcoming school year. Last year we were at three, we replaced one with general funds coming, um, from the, um, point five B S A that we're expecting to receive. We have had a variance of deed grants from the state. Uh, the one we have now expired this year. And then we applied for grants through the Alaska Reads Act. We were, we did not get those, um, mostly because we are not the lowest performing district in the state, and that was prioritized for those funds. Instead, we did receive one-time funds of about six hundred thousand. Um, we just got notification of that this week. So we'll determine how to use, how to best use those to support our programming. We just got notification of that this week, so we'll determine how to use, how to best use those to support our programming. And then the last two years, we've been a beneficiary of the Anchorage alcohol tax. We received $2 million and that funds eight Gen Ed classrooms. And we do serve low-income families for the prevention of child abuse and neglect. The alcohol tax also funds some of our, well, the majority of our community programming, which is our Countdown to Kindergarten program and playgroups for families that don't have access to an ASD preschool. And then we have collaborated with Head Start for many, many years. We have four classrooms where we fund the teacher and the rest of the staff is funded by Kids Core Head Start. And all families have to meet income eligibility guidelines for Head Start. And we meet all of the federal Head Start standards for those programs. They're in four ASD schools, gathered a little bit around town. And then we've received a good amount of grant funds from the Alaska Mental Health Trust, which has, which helped us start getting early childhood mental health consultation into all of our classrooms, fed and Gen Ed. And then the alcohol tax supports the majority of that funding now. They're very gracious to us. I beg them for money every year and they keep funding us. So I have an inquiry out again, because our funding as of right now is gone, but I've asked for some more. And then we're in and out with grants from the Alaska Children's Trust. They supported mental health consult for us a couple of years ago. And then most recently, we received a diaper grant from them, about $10,000 to help families in Anchorage with diapers and wipes. So I mentioned this a little bit, but our additional programming. So preschool for us isn't just preschool anymore. It's really, we have services from birth and families all the way into that CTE component, which is really exciting. But we do Countdown to Kindergarten, which are events geared for children the year before kindergarten in the community in collaboration with the local libraries. So we have ASD staff that work for us kind of in a contracted way, but they host the events locally for the families. We also collaborate with United Way and some other local organizations. At times, we have 20 to 30 families show up, or if it's a community collaboration, up to 3,000. So we're intertwined in all of that. Our playgroups are hosted at Denali. We have done, this past year, we had playgroups every month for a family. So they stay for the month for a cohort of one to two times a week. And it is for families that do not have access to an ASD program. So we've been expanding our reach that way. And then we have a program called Waterford, which is integrated into our ASD programs. But we also have some for the community. So we have additional licenses for families that we can offer. If they're not eligible for one of our programs, then they at least have something that year before kindergarten, if they have found our programming and know about it. I mentioned our early childhood mental health consultation. That's with Trinity Family Counseling. And we have, last year, we had four consultants that worked with us, as well as an intern that was integrated in. Our CT integration, our longstanding program at King Tech, we revamped it a couple of years ago. The high school side of the programming wasn't very strong. And we have a teacher that worked in preschool and in early intervention, who now runs the high school side of the program. So there's four levels from intro to early childhood, all the way to that internship, getting their CDA. Head Start, so we have our collaboration with ASD teachers. But next year, we're going to host a Head Start classroom at Baxter that is not ASD. So we're going to provide space to them. And they'll have three and four-year-olds, probably most likely just fours. But if they have some slots available, they'll add in some three-year-olds and they'll be using the space there at Baxter. So we'll have a nice collaboration, save them some money. They can serve more children. And hopefully, they will prioritize families that are income-eligible and live in the area and try to get them into their neighborhood school. And then, as I mentioned, we received the diaper pantry grant. So our next steps, big projects are the .5 BSA funding application through deed. We're able to apply to receive .5 funding for all of our kiddos in Gen Ed, regardless of the current funding stream. So we can use title funds, we can use the alcohol tax funds plus the .5 and claim those children, which should help us to expand. We just don't know what that funding will quite look like yet. So when we do receive it, then we'll be able to plan accordingly for expansion there. We did not receive the deed grant to open up new classrooms. We had planned to open up six. So we still have those locations on the docket for anything that's upcoming. And then we pretty much don't say no to any new funding opportunities. And it can be a lot of work, but it's paid off significantly for us.
Soem, yes? Thank you very much. Is there any questions for Mrs. Soem? Yeah.
Ms. Brown? Yeah, thank you. And Chelsea, it's good to see you again. So, and it's really gratifying to see that the work that we did on the alcohol tax, not only to get it in place, but to, you know, really advocate in my former role for, for making sure that it goes to early childhood education. So it's great to see. I have, I guess, a couple of observations from a budget perspective that I think are helpful highlight or useful to highlight. And then I have a question. First is, you know, you mentioned that your funding comes and goes, or the different sources comes and goes. And I think it's important to emphasize for operating, and this is going to be, you know, real basic, but worth stating, for operating funding, it is really important for the stability of programs to have reliable funding. And so I appreciate that you guys are creative and you're always looking for more funding. But just to say that when we, when we fund something as the assembly, we need to think about, you know, how long do we want it to go on, whether it's one time or operating? So I appreciate that you guys are looking toward that as well. The other thing is to note what you said, things like the alcohol tax. You can leverage local investments to be able to find other funding sources. So I appreciate that you're doing that. And again, I'm glad that our community invested in those things and that we're supporting early childhood. So my question though, too, so I know there's two, about $2 million of alcohol tax goes toward, what you said, eight classrooms in some of these programs. And I think that's helpful, thinking about scale, you know, again, because if we want to keep funding these things, we need to think about the money that's needed. About what percent of the $2 million goes toward those eight classrooms and the teachers and resources needed versus the other programs that you mentioned?
Probably about 70, 75% goes toward the classrooms. You can estimate about probably a little over $200,000 per classrooms for staffing.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much. As we continue to grow in that area. Okay, school start times, Dr. Bryant?
All right, so for this, I'll just give an overview of where we're at with school start times, what's happening, what do we need to know? So going into the upcoming school year, what's happening? So we'll be doing late start Mondays. So that means that our schools will start one hour later. So if you're a high school parent, this doesn't affect you at all because we've been doing late start Mondays. But it does impact our middle school and elementary schools. So why are we doing late start Monday? Because teachers will report at the same time, but they'll have an hour to work collaboratively with their peers, to look at data, to talk about student outcomes, to focus on something such as the new ELA curriculum that we recently adopted. This truly is an investment of time towards student outcomes and student learning. I believe that professional development should be a set of ongoing experiences and not an event. And a lot of school systems across the country treat professional development as an event. You know, it's a couple of days on the calendar. But this is really a movement to invest an hour every single week that will truly allow our teachers to hone their craft. And it also makes us competitive with, you know, districts such as Matsu, which have been doing district-wide PLCs for at least a few years. So as we think about our ambitious goals and guardrails that focus on math achievement, ELA achievement, and college career in life, this really focuses on all three. So I think it's a worthwhile investment. And that's why we're doing the late start Mondays going into the next school year. With that said, we did receive some valid feedback about, you know, some families really need that consistency of a drop-off five days a week. So for that reason, I've committed to having the buildings open at the same time for regular drop-off, five days a week, including on Mondays. What that will look like will depend on the schools. But we're talking to our principals, we're brainstorming different best practices. I will certainly be at an elementary school at the, on the first day of school to make sure that if students or if parents decide to drop off their student at the same time, you will have adults there to supervise. So more to come on that. It's a top priority. And with that said, we also adopted new school start times for all of our schools going into the 24, 25 school year. So right now, as many of you know, we have a sequence of high school start first, then middle school, then elementary schools, with 45 minutes in between. We need the 45 minutes because that's how we ensure our students get to school on time, given the large geographic area that Anchorage encompasses. Going into 24, 25, we'll be switching it up. Elementary schools will start first at 8:00 AM. Then we'll go into high schools, we'll start at 8:45 AM. And then middle schools will start at 9:30 AM. So you still keep that 45-minute gap in between. But the difference is that no one's starting school before 8:00 AM. And the reason why this is important is that we conducted a series of town halls. We engage with professionals, sleep scientists. And the research is clear that there really is an opportunity to focus on students' mental health and achievement if they are able to sleep a little longer. And I know that this is not a universally popular decision, but it's one that we took very carefully. And we weighed all of the feedback of, again, about 10,000 people who filled out a survey to give us feedback. I personally went to multiple town halls. And while there are certainly community members that feel strongly about the routines and traditions espoused by the current start times, there were a number of people that said, we'll figure out the situation with work because I really want my high school student to start school later. So we made the decision, but it's a big one that affects everybody in the community. There are a lot of municipality implications for this change. We need to think about stoplights and signage and all these different things. So that's why the board intentionally gave us a year to figure this out, to work with the Muni, to work with the business community. I have a vested interest in working with our childcare providers because I do understand that this does cause a strain for childcare and for families who need to get to work at a certain time. We're not unaware of that. And I will say that ASD wants to be a part of the solution when it comes to childcare in the city. So we're very excited about Proposition 14. One of the reasons why that's on the agenda today is because we'd love to hear any sort of updates that there are about that because we want to leverage that opportunity to really turn school start times into a way of reimagining how we think about childcare. So again, we want to be a part of the solution, but it's going to take some time and advance conversations with the municipality and others to get there. So that's my soapbox on school start times. I'm happy to open it up to any questions or thoughts.
Okay, first in the queue, we have Member Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President. And I know the Assembly members don't have any capacity to watch our meetings. You folks go through far too many as it is. So I just wanted to highlight something that Dr. Bryant mentioned, which seems especially salient regarding the school start time conversation. The, the most frequently mentioned objection to the big visionary school start time change that we set into motion effective not this fall, but next fall, what didn't have a direct tie to academics, it was access to affordable and accessible childcare. So there's an area of collaboration there. I agree with Dr. Bryant, ASD has a seat at that table, but ultimately, it isn't our table to set. And so to the extent that there's work both in the, in the ecosphere of the Proposition 14 environment, as well as outside of it, we touched on transportation earlier. I think it's something we need to address, not just because the broader community is going to be impacted by these, but the lack of childcare will impact teachers as well. Our teachers have students, they need to worry about addition to their classes. And I connected with an educator who said, these school start times will impact my ability to continue employment with ASD. If we don't figure something out. So there's, there's an urgent need to, to begin problem-solving, again, both inside and outside of the Proposition 14 arena. I've been doing some reading over the last few weeks about some really exciting stuff that is happening in the Lower 48 related to using excess space in elementary schools specifically as, as kind of a partnership with childcare providers. I think that there's, there's opportunities there. Would be very interested in further conversations. And so I wanted to throw that out there as something to begin thinking about.
Thank you. Any other comments, Member Higgins?
I feel like, that's on, yeah. I feel like the historian here, since my wife is on the 90s, I was on the school board since 2008 and the like. But we've had this issue in front of the school board many times and the school board and the administration took the position of status quo. It's going to cause problems, you're going to have to challenge it. Just, it's easier not to do anything about it. But I like a comment made by a business leader in East High School when we discussed this. And he, and he said, you know, we're losing 28 to 32-year-olds. This is going to improve academic outcome, just do it. And I like that approach. We've got to take bolder steps, in my opinion, in school board, if we're going to get the results that we want to get. And this is one that should have been done many years ago, but the status quo was more important. And we're, we're taking a step forward. And I appreciate the superintendent's position on this, being supportive of it, coming in front of the board. And I like the fact that the board got behind it and said, if it's good for kids, we need to do it. So it's going to be upsetting to some parents, I understand that. But it will be settled down, once it gets done, it's going to settle down and the kids in the future will benefit from it. So that's why I'm glad that we took the step we did.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, thank you, Dr. Bryant. And that is the next perfect segue to Prop 14. Are you going, who's doing, are you going to do that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We actually have a working group that is conducting some initial investigation on their own about establishing a working group for that. So I'm going to hand the mic, if that's all right with you, to Member Brody.
Yeah, thank you. And I will say that I am not the most informed person at this point to speak to this, but I can speak to what, what I know is planned. And I know if Member Perez Verdia was here, he would also be able to speak to this. So, so as we all know, there was a great group of community members who advocated for this to, to be put on, on the bond. And of course, Proposition 14, using our cannabis or marijuana tax passed. And so thank you to the voters for that. And so there's, there's a few different pieces that we'll need to be looking at from a budget perspective. And that's where myself, co-chair Member Zalatell, or Vice Chair, somebody Vice Chair Zalatell, and others will be looking at the, certainly the impacts of that on our overall budget that will come into play in 2024. So that, that's kind of one lane of work. The working group that started, though, is a second lane of work, which is the governance piece. So part of the proposition, as I understand it, sets up a board essentially to advise on use of those funds. And again, thinking about how we're being strategic, how we're making best use of those funds, and really having, having a plan, an ongoing plan for use of those funds in early childhood. And so the, there is a meeting next Wednesday. Again, it's, it's just an informal meeting, it's not a formal public meeting, of myself, Member Cross, and Member Perez Verdia, as well as, as well as others who had worked on, on that proposition. So, so really, we're talking about, you know, where we start. And we're going to come up with a plan that we will bring others in as, as possible. And so the specific work of that, like I said, is to craft an ordinance to enact that board. And so that's the second lane of work. First is budget, second governance. And then I think the third one, which is much broader, and again, I want to acknowledge the limitations of the Open Meetings Act, which is that we, we have to be careful, you know, how many of us are coordinating. But I think there is a much broader lane of work beyond the governance, beyond the budget, which is, you know, working with the school district and other partners to figure out what this looks like on the ground and what the best use of those funds are. So I would invite, you know, everybody who's interested to participate in that larger conversation. And I think that's part of what our little working group is going to figure out. You know, how do we, how do we keep our, our piece of it figuring out the governance and that ordinance? And then what does that larger piece look like? So that's really the only update I have at this point, but we're looking for more soon.
Thank you. And I'll just speak briefly to process. You heard we referenced a working group and I want to help the school board to understand our process. We have work sessions, we have committees, we have subcommittees. All of those are creations of the body. But a working group is a group of members working independently from the body. It was not directed by the Chair or the Assembly, which means it is not subject to the same rules as any of those other groups. And so until such a time as someone brings forward an actual item or asks for committee work to be done on the topic, this is a project of those three members who are listed, Mr. Perez, Verdia, Member Brody, and Member Cross. And so if you're interested in more specifics about what they're doing, please reach out directly to them outside of our various committee processes. Until further notice.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. All right, we're moving on now. We're at H on the agenda, member comments. So who would like to start us off with member comments? All right, so I'll stop. Oh, oh, Member Higgins.
And I'm going to, I'm going to shock President Bellamy and be brief. I just want to say that I have, in the past, seen the interactions between the Assembly and the board be less than supportive. It's been pretty hostile at times. It led to some recalls, it did all kinds of things. The support that we've got from the Assembly, our relationship is contributing to the success that we'll be making changes and being able to go forward. And I believe we're going to try to make more changes. We're going to try to get some real changes there. And when that happens, I believe part of that success belongs with the Assembly as well. And I am very appreciative for what the Assembly is doing and how they're reacting and being supportive of public education. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Ditto, ditto. So we're just going to come right around. All right, so you'll be next, Member Wilson.
So I guess I'm kind of stuck on the CCL work because I get really excited about that. I just wanted to also share that education is grassroots work development or workforce development. I hear the term workforce development on the business community, business side. And I hear the terms CCL, CTE on the education side. But it is all workforce development. Our students are learning to read and write. They're learning their math skills. They get to practice building skills that employers are looking for. And they get to practice these skills in a safe environment where they get to fail and figure it out. So by the time they get to the age where they are in the workforce, they've had that opportunity to develop those skills. They get to participate in athletics and extracurricular activities, to learn teamwork, to learn leadership. All of these are workforce development skills that our students are learning, that our education system is providing. And the more that our organizations, the school district, the municipality, you know, the school board, the Assembly, our businesses in the community, our nonprofit organizations, our trades, the more that we all work together to build those skills for these students so that they have these opportunities and they know they have these opportunities. And we start to eliminate that disconnect between our students and our business community, understanding that their opportunities are here in Alaska for them. Because there is a disconnect. And we are, I truly believe that the district and the community is starting to really connect that and will connect that for our students. So I'm excited about that work and I appreciate all of the effort and support that the Assembly has had and the school district has had for our students. So I'm just excited about the continued work.
Thank you very much. We just coming on around, Mrs. Braga.
I echo everything about the CCL that is so exciting and fabulous. And I appreciate the bold leadership that we're pushing on with this school start time changes. It makes a big difference. One thing I noticed, you know, like you mentioned, maybe better community understanding of bonds and whatnot. But I really loved the signs you had in front of schools that said, the bond will, I saw one by East High, I think that was a really great thing that you did. Helps to connect with the community. And, you know, campaigning, I heard over and over, people just don't have a great understanding of what's going on in our schools. And so anytime that we can get the doors open and start those conversations and make the schools a community place is super important.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you. So first time, you know, and I enjoyed it. And I really appreciate Mr. Higgins' comments about the collaborative environment that we're working in these days. I'm excited for some what I hear everyone talking about today. The CCL sounds like a great program. I think it's wonderful that we're updating these start times to better meet the needs of the students. I would just feel remiss in this environment if at least didn't touch on my concerns about the teacher workforce, right? I mean, the people will ultimately implement all this. And I have a number of friends who teach for ASD and other folks that come in contact to teach. And, you know, honestly, they're frustrated, they're burned out, they're tired. More of them are leaving. They feel like they're just continuously being asked to do more with less. And they just, I don't think they see any relief in sight. And I know that a lot of the decisions that affect the way they feel are made, you know, outside of our immediate purview here. But I recognize that none of these grand ideas we have in terms of structural changes or better buildings or any of that are actually going to make a difference if we don't have a strong teacher workforce to actually deliver the education to the kids. So I don't have an easy solution to put forward here, but I do hope that, you know, the conversation going forward can really start to talk about what steps we can take as the board and with Assembly support where needed to start to address some of those challenges.
And thank you very much. Smires.
Thank you. And I want to echo what Zach said. Thank you for being here in our first meeting. So it's a learning experience, we've got a lot to cover. So and I also want to echo what Zach said. I do have some friends that are ASD teachers as well, and I'm hearing similar issues. So not sure the role we can take to help make that better, but I look forward to doing that where we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Again, I've had five kids go through the ASD school system. And if it wasn't for the benefit my family had of me being and my wife being very proactive and being very involved parents, I'm sure the outcome would have been tremendously different. And so I'm really passionate about things that we can do to incentivize parental involvement in education. Because in order for a teacher to effectively spend time with the children to make sure that they're absorbing the information when you've got a class at thirty or forty and you've only got an hour to cover a subject, and you may have a child who needs five or 10 minutes because, and some who don't, you know, if you don't, as a parent, if you're not intentional about being active in their education and you are a bystander, that is a completely different experience. So I think what we can do is how do we get more parents actively involved in their children's education and participating in the education process? I think that's something that we overburden the ASD to respond on that. But I also understand that parents, they have a whole different dynamic with the expenses and going to work. And I am a little concerned about this change in school times because that's going to put additional workplace struggles on parents. I understand the necessity for it because we've got to create a environment where the children are learning best and their minds are bright and they're operating in that optimum time when their cognition is, you know, apexed. But I am concerned that some of these things will put additional stresses on parents where they're less involved. And I'm interested to see how all this plays out. Thank you.
And thank you. Mr. Olin.
There we go. Always good to be here with you all and just be kept in the loop about what's happening. And I really feel like ASD is doing a lot to bring innovative approaches to education. So it's exciting. You know, I will give, I think, maybe two pieces of feedback. One on helping kids sleep well. I think maybe amount of homework would be another consideration. Maybe I wonder how our youth representative would feel about that, having maybe a little bit less homework. And then on the other thing, you know, on the issue of bonds, I think robust public outreach and really making sure that we get messaging out there in the community about what are the things, what are the goals we're trying to raise money for? Why are they important? And just, you know, from my personal perspective, I think that those efforts could be ramped up. You know, I saw some of the signage as well, but I just didn't really see, maybe I'm not the target audience and the algorithm's not hitting me because of those, I'm not a parent. I don't know, but I just did not see a lot of public messaging, advertising, campaigning efforts, you know, for this most recent bond. So, yeah, I think maybe looking at who our consultants are for that and just making sure we're partnering with folks who can really get the message out there would be good. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Right, Member Hallam.
Just to touch on what Mr. Olin just said, I've had some association with bonds, yes. And of course, it's not directly tied to the district. We don't promote the bonds. We provide some information, but we don't campaign for them. But there were people that chose not to contribute in relation to the community work agreement that was passed a little bit before that bond package. So that hurt the outreach, the resources they had to work with as well. And this is one other factor in all of it. And to what Mr. Johnson said, ASD's had a problem for a couple of decades. In essence, it was a contract that was pretty bad for employees. It was right when I started teaching about twenty-five years ago, twenty-three years ago. And the rather expansive list of people on the eligible to be hired list, which are people that have applied to the district and screened by the district and found to have good credentials. And it's the list that principals look at to fill a position in their school. It used to have over three thousand people on it. And it used to be that getting a position as a substitute was competitive because a lot of those people were here in Anchorage. And if you got called as a sub, you put on a coat and tie if you were a guy and you had resumes in your briefcase. And you tried to get the attention of the principal and hope that you got noticed because that was all part of trying to get a job with the Anchorage School District. And today, especially, I'm going to say, if you have credentials as a sped teacher, there has to be something wrong with you not to be hired. I mean, in other more difficult to fill areas like science and like that, the list is not very deep any longer. So in this case, we're going forward with that condition. At the same time, we're facing a national shortage. In two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, when the economy kind of went south in the Lower Forty-Eight, for a few years, we saw people hired into this district that had two, three, four, five years of experience that had been laid off in the Pacific Northwest. And they looked to Anchorage as a place that was hiring and growing. That's the only time I can remember having seen that happen. And one other quick anecdote, in the early nineties, I stopped by the Alaska Teacher Fair, which took up the whole ballroom of the Captain Cook. There were lines of applicants. All the districts were there except for Anchorage. If you wanted to apply to Anchorage, you had to take a cab over to Begone because they had all these people they'd already screened. There wasn't any real point in them being there. But hundreds or possibly thousands of applicants standing in line hoping to get a job. The last time I stopped by was, I think, two thousand and sixteen. There were a couple of dozen applicants in a third of the ballroom. Most of that room actually just had round tables where people could sit while they contemplated what they wanted to do next. And I was there to chat with someone from ASD HR that kind of might be able to get their attention and have a few minutes. And we sat and talked for an hour and no one interrupted us. I mean, the landscape has changed so dramatically here. But a lot of our citizens, I think, still have the idea that we're the highest paid teachers in the country and we should be able to just hire who we want. We really want to be able to choose the right person. And it's more the case now. It makes it difficult to move mediocre people out of the profession, which desperately needs to be done to keep it healthy. But if you don't think you have a prospect for a better than mediocre replacement, it makes no sense. You go with what you've got. If you don't have some confidence, there's a pool to draw from. I know the city is facing some of the same issues. It's not quite as in front of people because a lot of city employees operate outside the view of the public where our teachers operate right in front of them, they interact with parents and all. But it's another area that the municipality and the district sort of have a common interest in making this be a good place to work and draw people so that we can choose the right people to fill the spots we have because employees are expensive as all get out. And we want to get good people in there as well. And I do want to say, I really do appreciate the tenor of the Assembly and the willingness to look at shared issues and work together. Hasn't always been the case. I've only been here thirty-five years and I've seen it go both ways. This is a lot better for everybody. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Member Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to welcome formally the new members of the Assembly. I appreciate you're willing to serve. Please consider every member of the board a resource if you're looking for information, have questions, hear something in the community council that doesn't add up. We're here to get you access to that information so that there's open lines of communication and accurate dialogue publicly, which is always an area to improve on. And I did want to echo the sentiments of supporting our educators. Certainly, as was alluded to, some of that starts with advocacy in Juneau. We remain the only state where educators don't receive full social security benefits or a pension. And that is going to be a key issue to address if we're going to end out migration. Definitely had to be a piece of that puzzle. But I know that the board talks often as to how we can support our educators because we're going to be seeing a numbers crunch here, especially starting this fall. So thank you, everyone, for the good conversation. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Tyrell.
Yeah, it's been a really interesting discussion. And just to touch on something that Mr. Johnson and Mr. Cross said, like, I think we need to focus on both the parents, the teachers, but also the students. If we don't have students who want to learn, there will be no learning done. So I think there needs to be a kind of a culture shift as well. But that being said, the new initiatives to push start times back, to implement new programs, it kind of shows that their care, like students are cared for and that people want to help. And I think it's exciting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So much like several other people, this conversation about the CCL is the most exciting topic that we covered today because it does kind of help to connect what the education is happening to the community in the future for these young people. I really do appreciate the focus and the conversation we had about the flexibility that needs to be built within that program. Because for myself, when I was in my freshman year and sat at a little Play-Doh computer and did an analysis of my future jobs and said I could be an undertaker, a preacher, or a politician. And I was in my forties before I landed in the career, one of those three careers that it said, in late forties at that. And so it takes time for some of us to figure out where we fit in this big wide world. So that flexibility is going to be really important. And then there's an item I didn't put on the agenda. I thought about it after the President and I discussed at a previous meeting, probably about a year ago or maybe three meetings back. There was some broad discussion about the potential of enhancing and developing a youth leadership cadre within the school district and engaging them more with the municipal process, which is kind of a recruitment tool towards the youth membership program and some ways to ensure that the recruitment is really broad across the community. And that project, in some ways, tied on the vine almost. But when I talked about it at our Rules Committee yesterday, that I was thinking about removing the topic, Member Martinez pointed out that that's work he's done in the mayor's office and it's work he's interested in. So what happens when you leave a meeting early is you become the chair. And so I am appointing him Chair of that effort for the Assembly to work with whomever the President appoints on their end. So we can keep that going and maybe get it started again. So thank you, everybody, for participating. It's a great meeting and great topics.
Thank you. Member Dunley.
So the Pathways to Prosperity report tonight was really great. And it's the result of the board having a multi-year process to adopt three top priorities. Number one is reading. Number two is mathematic proficiency. And number three was the college career life goals. Trying to graduate citizens, students that are ready for life. And the Pathways to Prosperity is really exciting because initially, the district seemed to be struggling on how to do this. Because we didn't really have a format for it, for the college career life component of those three top priorities. And so it's exciting, they found great examples nationally to partner with and to learn from. But that isn't the only aspect of the college career life priority. We also have work going on for financial, personal finance education, which is really important and has been really surprising to me that it hasn't been a huge priority of the school district before now. But they're developing in the school district before now, but it, they're developing that also. So it's an ongoing process. The pathways is, is one element of those top three priorities, that, that priority. Um, and there's going to be more to come. Um, and they seem to be making really good progress with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Braga?
Yeah, thank you. Um, two comments. First, um, really great meeting and really great introduction formally to the work of the, the school board and the school district and looking forward to, um, working as a member of this body on, on a lot of the things that, that we've discussed. And then also I wanted to make, um, more of a, I guess, personal statement, or at least not, not speaking on behalf of the body. Um, so, you know, I, and I'm sure others read in the news, um, the inaction or rather a, a preliminary action by the State Board of Education regarding, um, a policy for, uh, transgender students participating in sports, um, or, or, you know, related to gender and students participating in sports. Um, I, I am certainly concerned about that policy and, um, and worried about its impact on kids. Um, and I understand the, the Anchorage School District has not taken up such a policy or it's not, um, not contemplating one at this time, to my knowledge. But I just wanted to make the public aware that that regulation, um, the, the State Board of Education approved that regulation to go out for public comment. Um, so the public comment period is through Wednesday, July 26th. And, um, that's the date of their next meeting. If, uh, an individual would like to send comments, they can send it to, uh, d e e d dot commissioner at alaska.gov. That's where the regulation comments go. Um, and then I also, uh, I was reading in the news last night, I just wanted to give, um, on the record, a, a shout out to, uh, youth member Felix Myers, who is, as I understand, a student in Sitka, um, who spoke very eloquently and was quoted in that ADN article. So I appreciate, again, um, just like our, our member here, I appreciate when youth participate in government and, and speak their minds. Um, and so I just, again, encourage folks, if you're interested in that topic, um, to please, uh, speak up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Bryant?
I'll just echo a few of the sentiments shared earlier. Uh, formally a welcome to our new Assembly members. Uh, in general, we, um, truly value the support and collaboration with the Assembly. You know, I'm relatively new to Anchorage myself. This is my first year. I, and I think we'll be surrounded by incredible leaders who are really moving our city forward. And I am a proud resident of North Anchorage, by the way. And I have big hopes and dreams for what we can become as a city. And just know that the district wants to be a part of the solution. So if we can offer any information or support to guide your own decision-making, we're happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a few, I think everybody who has spoken, given comments, uh, just a couple... Oh, on the phone. Oh, Mr. South.
No, no, thank you, President Bellamy. And I'll be brief. Um, again, as always, thank you for welcoming us. Really enjoy these meetings. Really excited to hear about the continuing education for teachers. Um, I think it's another, uh, feather in your cap for trying to retain teachers as, as we see retirements, as we've seen in other, other groups. I do appreciate, um, the bold decisions that you're making, uh, you know, namely the, uh, change of start times. I always love the, I always love a decision. It may go right, it may go wrong, but you're going to learn something and you just react quickly, make an adjustment, and you'll always move forward. So as I say, fail quickly and make another decision. So thanks for that and look forward to the next meeting. Thank you.
And thank you very much. All right. So I also want to welcome the new Assembly members, uh, to the table. Um, you know, I, I have been the President now, this is my third term, I think, for, as being President of the Board. And it just gets better and better. Uh, we are narrowing our focus on kids and we're keeping it there. And that is very, very important. Um, I did want to state though, for the record, that personally, there's not a decision that I've made, an action that I've taken or a vote that I've, uh, given that was in any way deceitful or undermining of the work of the Anchorage School Board. So, um, you know, we bring to this, uh, work our best every single day and we keep kids at the primary focus. That's what I'm doing and that's what I will continue to do. And I have another thanks for the Assembly. Uh, like, early in, late in December, early January, you were so gracious. Uh, you understood our struggle in trying to communicate so many things and juggling with so many topics. You graciously gave us a grant for consultant services. Uh, we will be getting, giving an update on, um, the deliverables from that at our next, at our retreat this weekend. But that has been, um, really, it's been a godsend to help, uh, the Communications Chair, to help myself and the Vice President try to move forward and keep up with all of the, of the, of the pieces. And one of the pieces that we really have enjoyed, um, collaboration and some, some advi- advice around and strategic planning around is the CCL goal. And, you know, how, how, how are we telling that story? And what are the pieces that, um, that will make that story complete? So we're, I'm, I'm excited to be sharing, uh, that work. Uh, we will have a video of students. Uh, we have lots of things. So, um, I look forward to, if you miss our retreat, which is on the 16th and 17th, uh, if you miss that, uh, actually this conversation will take place on the set, on the 16th, that Friday night. If you miss that, then we will bring it back to the next meeting. So, um, again, I just wanted to, um, thank you for investing in us, um, and our, our learning. It's all about continual, continuous improvement. So with that, uh, we're going to move on now to public participation. Is there anyone in the public, in the audience that would like to comment? I don't think anybody signed up, but I see four people. Do it, does anybody, would anybody like to comment? Yeah? Come right here to that mic right there. Give us your name.
Okay. Hi, my name's Gabriela Soto. Um, I'm sorry, I don't know proper etiquette for this. Uh, this is my first time doing this.
Okay, just state your name and, and what you'd like to share with us.
Okay. Um, I do think, uh, that the pathway of Pathways to Prosperity is a very good, uh, way to bring a lot of more students together. I know that I had, I had participated in vocational education with King Tech and that had brought me to new experiences and socializing with a whole bunch of people all around the state because I had also met students from Yukon. Uh, I had met students from all around the, the city. Uh, I think this is also a good way to focus on, uh, how we're going to prepare and look forward to what we're starting next. And, uh, bringing this to middle school as well is also a good way to prepare students, uh, early on. I know a lot of my peers had struggled with, uh, feeling like they're getting, losing time or feeling late to picking what they want or struggling with how to decide what they want to do after high school. And I know a lot of them also tried thinking early on in middle school what they wanted and early on in high school too. So I think this is a great way to start, um, preparing everything. And, uh, a few people also mentioned the problem of transportation. I know that was a, uh, big crisis, uh, starting of the year with the lack of school bus drivers. Um, I can't remember his name, but he had mentioned, uh, why don't students take, uh, the PeopleMover?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I know for a lot of families that, uh, uh, their safety of their own children is very prioritized with them and very important to them. And given that, uh, we do in Alaska have a pretty high crime rate, I feel like that is a big factor of why students don't take PeopleMover or, um, public transportation, public transportation. And, uh, that's all I really have.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Mm-hmm. Welcome. Okay, seeing no others, our next meeting will be, um, sometime in this, in September. So we'll, uh, we will get that date, uh, mutually decided. And all of our meetings are here. We decided two years ago that this is a central location. We are all set up almost all the time. So we invite, we, we really do like having you guys. Uh, so, but we'll get the date and get it on the calendar. And with that, if there's no, uh, nothing else, one more, Mr. Olin?
I, I should have said this earlier, but you jogged my memory. Um, in our first quarter budget revisions, one of the, um, programs that the Assembly chose to support was the Best Beginnings Early Literacy Program. And that was something that we all learned about at one of these meetings. So I'm happy that we were able to do that.
Absolutely. Thank you for that as well. All righty. Moved in second to adjourn. Any opposition? Seeing and hearing none? We are adjourned.